I'd like to call this meeting to order pursuant Mass General Law, Chapter 38, Section 20. I hereby informing all attendees that a video and auto-recording or audio recording is being made of the meeting. This time, our first order of business is to reorganize the board.
Herman, I've moved Buck Donovan to be elected Chair for another year.
I would thank him for that.
Yeah.
I feel like, I feel like everybody stepped back a step and I missed it. But okay, we seem to do okay with this. I'll take that nomination and proceed to a roll call vote. Peter?
Aye.
Peg?
Aye.
Dave?
Aye.
Thank you. Now, we, we also need a vice chair when I need to step down. Anybody show interest? Peter, you've done it before.
I'll do it again, but I don't want to nominate myself.
I'd like to nominate Peter as vice chair.
I'll second that.
Okay. Any other discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote. Dave?
Aye.
Buck Donovan, aye. Peg?
Aye.
Peter? Vote for you. It's awkward voting for yourself, isn't it? So anyway, uh, okay, moving in, um, we have a special permit hearing tonight. For fourteen thirty-five Cape Street. So you folks are aware wherever, we normally have a five-person board. To proceed with this, we need a supermajority, so that would mean a unanimous tonight. I'm putting it to you if you want to delay that till we have a full board, or if you want to get it going. I think we've discussed this, I think you've been advised on this before.
I just offer one observation. I'm gonna ask the board to do a site visit, uh, because I want to understand more about the grading up there. And so if I succeed in getting that in the schedule, then we wouldn't just make a final decision tonight anyway. So, uh, we could do it in steps, you know, a little bit tonight, site visit and the final vote later. But we're not sure whether we could have a fifth member even then, vote, even after.
I believe so. Yeah. It, it, that would seem fair. I don't know how that, I don't know of anyone.
The next meeting will be soon enough for you people then?
Nothing is soon enough. But, yeah.
When, when will the next meeting be? Do you mean monthly or?
Oh, bi-monthly.
I, I would consider making a motion to meet sooner if, if you're in a hurry.
Twenty-four.
Can we pin it on a, the site visit?
I'll make, do it right at the site? We need somebody to take minutes, but I think we could have a meeting at the site if we were noticed.
I don't think, I don't think the twenty-fourth would be unrealistic either. We do a site visit next week scheduled, and then I'll come back the twenty-fourth for vote. Hi Kathy.
Hi. I do have a question here. You're talking the twenty-fourth, no, the twenty-fourth is fine. I thought there was a conflict, there isn't. You're fine.
Thank you. And, and if you're wondering about public comment, we had to push it back a little bit because we had the, this time for six o'clock, okay?
That's fine.
All right, thank you. Yeah, so, I, I think that, but I'll also tell you guys, you're, you're in a tough situation because our last two solar projects, we had issues with. So you're gonna be the bearer of their mistakes. Yes. Okay, so I, I sort of apologize already, um, but we're, we're gonna be ultra, yeah, we.
It goes night or do the site visit tonight?
Doing, great.
Wait for Conrad to, to be here?
Yeah.
I mean, it's up to, you know, if you've got a critical schedule with financing or something, what's about to elapse, or, you know, an option or something. Try to accommodate it, but I think it'd be better to get Conrad involved if we can wait for him to get back now. Oh, Conrad is the fifth member.
Oh, okay.
Sorry, sorry.
Yeah, I think we should be okay to do the presentation, get that, and he can watch the recorded video of the presentation and, and discussion, and then we'll still have plenty of time for discussion. Okay, so you guys are up.
Want to come up to the table?
On up? We don't have an easel. Um, just pull one of those chairs out and set it on the arms of the chairs.
Do you have a chair?
And I've got the, you guys can see, I have the satellite up on here. You see that Peg?
Yes, thank you.
Well, that's the area they're talking about. There's the storage.
You know me.
There's the storage.
Okay.
Okay?
Yeah, thank you.
And then you go way down over the hill. Just from Route twenty.
No, you can't.
I mean, there should be, as we said, turnpike keeper. There's one in West Dockbridge where the tow plaster used to be.
Yeah.
I mean, you could throw a stone at it, so.
Yeah.
They're all on the turnpike.
And the thing is that you have the brook and the trolley line in between them and any neighbors, so.
As I say, I, I, I really look forward to cleaning up this.
Yeah, I know.
And I'm not throwing stones, Buck.
We'll get there. Just let, let me. If I owned it, it'd be different. Yep, but go ahead, folks.
So, hi, I'm Colleen DiBenedetto. I'm a development manager with Walter Energy and for the applicant VS Cape Smart LLC. We have submitted a, an application for a special permit at fourteen thirty-five Cape Street for an approximately five hundred kilowatt, um, tracker, uh, solar facility without battery storage. There's no battery with this project. We propose to use the existing driveway. Of our grading would be area that you see in green. Stalling utility poles. Way, internal driveway. Posing some screening along the southern edge. It, it's kind of hard to, I think, to see anything from Cape Street, but we are, we're proposing to put hedge slats along the fence to supplement if there's any gaps. We have been issued an order of conditions from the League Conservation. To, uh, Forside and Brian Sider, Forside, to get into the detail.
Yeah, so Brian Sider with Forside were the civil designer.
What's your last name?
Sider, so, as in C.I.T.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, so we did the site plan. As you alluded to, the existing site is a long-used as a gravel pit since the late nineties. Except for the last several years, it's been abandoned, but it was left as a open, unvegetated area up here where we're proposing the site. And the driveway is existing over a bridge that goes over the brook, and we're proposing to reuse the existing bridge that was used for heavy equipment and, uh, proposing to put steel plates over top of it during construction for extra reinforcement. And the proposed project, like Colleen said, mainly up in this northwestern corner. It's about three point five acres of solar panels enclosed by chain link fencing and the southern side of these screens. We've designed, uh, warm water systems in the form of essentially berms with water quality swales on the whole southern border, and they overflow into a detention basin, which will further filter the water as well as up in the northwest corner where some of the runoff goes, just based on the grading. And there's pretty significant regrading in the gravel pit itself. It's currently has a few, um, large pits in it and steep slopes, especially up on this north border against the highway. Uh, we're proposing to regrade the whole thing with a maximum two to one slope, so it'll be less steep than it currently is. There's a lot of erosion that's taking place on the steep slopes, so eliminate that. The rest of the site is mainly, uh, gentle, uh, maximum twelve percent slope and, uh, or less. A lot of it'll just be flat, uh, and then the whole thing will be re-vegetated. And proposed a, we've proposed a seed mix that's a pollinator mix. It's good for honeybees and things, and it'll be essentially a meadow where there is currently just a gravel pit there, so. Between the collectors, the, this pollinator, underneath and around, yeah, they're raised up. So they'll be, this'll all just be a meadow, essentially. Mowed infrequently. Under control. And the, along with this project, the interconnection with the existing utilities along Cape Street, so that'll require several new utility poles. And we propose to direct bore underneath the wetlands, so it doesn't disturb it. And also there's a, uh, existing utility easement across the middle of the property. So it'll be direct boring underneath the utility easement in the wetlands, coming back up to a couple more poles up to the new, um, utility pedestal.
Where you go under the existing power line, you have to do underground?
Direct bore. And we've kept that outside of the, it's in the buffer zone of the wetlands, but we've kept it outside of the wetlands themselves as part of that, uh, notice of intent.
What does the green indicate? Is that the river?
This is the brook.
You're gonna bore through the, underneath the brook too?
Yes. It's pretty deep, that deep though.
Yeah, it's a nice trout, little, little trout brook. Probably five feet deep, six feet deep in spots.
The water is that deep?
Yeah. Where it gets narrow. Just to add a couple things, um, we are doing a little bit of improvement, if you don't want to point where the construction laydown area is. That's a flat sort of gravel area now that's been used in the past. That'll be used for this project for construction, but then when we come out, we're going to clean that all up and also re-vegetate that area, so it's not just a sort of bare gravel parking lot like it is now. And, um, one other thing, we've met with the fire chief about a year ago onsite. We walked the route, um, and he's satisfied with the route. And then Brian followed up with him about a month ago, just to double check and reconvene, and he agreed as being suitable for fire protection. He said he wouldn't get in the fence area, but he would, he can access the, the site and is satisfied.
And the, the finish road.
He's gonna use the existing alignment and grade it, it'll just be regrade, you know, smoothed off and gravelled.
Because you'll need access to it.
Right, you can see in the aerial photo there that it.
Yeah.
It's, it's wide enough, as is.
That would just be widening this, um, entry portion to eighteen feet where it goes up to the utility-owned, uh, pedestal, or, um.
The, what, point of education?
And the rest will be twelve feet wide as it currently is. Utilizing the existing bridge, there's a new gate proposed, but it has a Knox box for emergency access, like an emergency key. That's eighteen feet wide, and this is mostly existing also, essentially just extending the gravel driveway.
That's getting picked up pretty good.
Rest of it.
Why the circuit of the driveway?
Uh, that's, that's how it exists now because of the grades. So this is actually kind of a, it's a depression comes up, yeah.
So the site is, you, you said you've been there, but it's a lot of junk and a lot of debris, and there's like piles of old, uh, stumps and rocks, and that's all gonna be smoothed out, taken, you know, cleaned up. Uh, all the, there's old, like, refrigerators, which are be, will be disposed of properly. So it's really a good reuse, I think, of the site to, uh, to clean it up.
The, oh, is existing, existing bridge, I was telling myself, it's just two headwinds and a couple I-beams. Uh, you're gonna plate it, is it gonna stay as plated as from here on out, or is?
Plates are being proposed to be removed long-term, um, so there'll be no access?
There is, you can drive over it. The fire chief said he was, he would drive over the bridge as is with.
Without having plates on.
I, I think you're thinking the old trolley that you see.
Yeah, I think I am.
Yeah. It's not the, it's a different bridge.
Okay.
Yeah.
When you regrade the site, you're gonna, you're gonna use everything, you're not gonna bring anything in, you're just gonna use what's on-site for regrading?
Brian?
Yeah, we'd worked it out so that, I think we have extra material, if anything, and we'd probably just lose it on-site, rather than having to haul anything off-site, besides the garbage and junk and all that.
The berm swales, uh, is that to help filter the runoff from the site?
Yeah, they're, um.
Then it goes to the retention pond as the final step, or what?
The retention ponds essentially for this area on the east to all come to here. This, just, the water will filter into it and essentially, uh, disperse into the ground, which is a filtration, so it doesn't go down the slope toward the utility easement. And then this is a weird property line that comes up here. This is a, um, non-pervious berm, just to direct water away from that property line, so there's no.
And then high flows are diverted to the detention basin, so that in a big storm like we had last night, it will filter through the ground, but it has a, a high flow, overflow into the detention basin, which will further detain and release slowly.
And they're gonna have somebody maintain the retention pond?
Yeah, I mean, um.
Those things usually are troublesome.
Yeah, per the Conservation Commission, there's an operation and maintenance plan that's been approved and agreed upon by the client, by the applicant, um, so.
Go ahead Peg.
Did you hear any? Nothing, not a word, okay, just.
We did talk to the neighbors during the conservation process, so they've all reviewed the plans. They all, well, I'm not gonna say every one of them, the ones that were interested.
You have, um, Williams and, Williams was one, right?
We talked to the, I don't know who the names, the people right down on the road.
Don, um. Don.
There was, there, there were people from both sides. Don spoke on behalf of people that live.
Linda Siz, who's affiliated with Lee Land Trust, reviewed the plans, um, she had some comments that we've incorporated.
Warwick's are on the other side of the road.
Yeah, nobody from across the road.
Well, it's a good thing nobody's here.
Yeah, exactly.
There's Timmy Williams right there.
And this is all the Beaver Storage Facility, so like you said, you can't see it from Cape.
You can barely see the thing off, so that's, that's a big.
Questions, I don't know when you want.
Go ahead, yeah, we can go right around.
Can you review for us what the Conservation Commission conditions are?
Bring him to the next meeting.
I can, I can bring him up on my. Yeah.
I think there was a.
While, while we're reading, Brian, I wonder, you said something about a two to one slope. Can you explain to me what that is? Like, is that? So, uh, what's the two and what's the one?
You know, one horizontal, one vertical, so the flatter of the two options.
That's a pretty steep.
Pretty steep, yeah, but it's a.
That's existing grade or that's a proposed?
Proposed, it's steeper now in places. The existing soil can hold up, steeper, but it is eroding.
I looked at your new, your map of your graded area, and it looked like where the collectors are gonna be, I'm assuming that's where the twelve percent grade is gonna be. And then it's a steeper bank.
Yeah.
Up to the interstate.
Right.
So the only part, that's why this fence line comes down like this, because this is very steep bank here.
Yeah.
So this will be two to one just up to the fence line and everything south of that.
All right, so, two to one is six on twelve, that's about a thirty-something, thirty-five degree.
Yeah.
It's pretty steep, so you're gonna have to do some.
That is.
To make sure it doesn't erode, right, into your collectors?
It is, we, that's our sort of historic maximum slope vegetated that doesn't erode. And I think looking at these soils, you'll see that they can, they're actually steeper, so I think you could go steeper, but, but we're not. So it's sort of the maximum I would recommend as vegetation.
So when you have that slope, what, what are the measures that you use to prevent erosion?
Just proposing, uh, erosion matting and hydro seeding.
So erosion matting is like burlap, only fancier?
Correct. Stapled in.
Okay. Yeah, Colleen, do you, you wanna talk about the conditions?
Sure, I just, I don't have my, I have my glass.
Go on, if something else will come back.
I know one was to.
Uh, well, there's the general conditions, but I think you're looking for the special conditions, correct? The boilerplate, not the.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, I'm just concerned about runoff mainly.
I don't think my eyes probably aren't much better than yours. So these were, it was just one, two, two special, uh, one condition. The grass outside the fence surrounding the panels and the grass inside the fence must be mowed. This is to be a pre-construction inspection, but there is to be a pre-construction of the site after erosion controls have been installed before any other work is done. These standard conditions, well, I had to paraphrase some of that because I think there was a typo in there. The grass outside the fence surrounding the panels and grass inside the fence must be mowed, and there must be a pre-construction inspection of the site after the erosion controls have been installed.
The, the idea, I think, was to leave longer grass outside the fence for animals.
Yeah.
To forage.
Versus.
Going everything.
So, tell me about mowing. Is there gonna be mowing, or are you gonna just leave it? It'll be mowed, I don't know.
So, um, we typically go in there. Three times a year.
Rushed down, basically, right?
That's right, yes, yeah.
Can, can you tell me about the, uh, this is all, the conditions are all fine, it doesn't raise any concerns with me, it sounds. Tell me how that mechanism works. It's a tracking mechanism that follows, does it follow the azimuth of the sun that moves across the sky, or just up and down?
Um, it, it, it follows, um.
Changes the vertical angle, right?
Yes.
But doesn't move left and right?
No, it, it, it just, it's, it's like a seesaw.
So, when the sun is high in the sky, it's kind of flat, and then the morning and evening, it's kind of steep?
Yes.
The, the application mentioned that you need a waiver of weight requirement, which we had rolled in sort of arbitrarily, frankly, at fifteen feet.
Yeah.
I thought fifteen feet was gonna be plenty, but, you know, I didn't, I didn't realize they were gonna be moving.
Right.
That's, I was explaining to Brian on the way in. Five or so years ago, when most solar developers were installing fixed panels, probably being no more than twelve feet from grade, started to move into the tracking system for efficiency reasons. And so, um, yeah, in the older bylaw, that uses, um, we are for some relief, a waiver.
So, I think you said, I, I, I don't remember the number of inches, it was two hundred inches, so it's the maximum height? Sixteen and a half feet, oh, I believe is the max.
That's only part, so that's.
That's.
Right, no, I know, that's only when it's, when it's morning and evening.
Or maybe winter, yeah.
Not at all committed to the fifteen feet. Kind of waiver to give you, I don't wanna give you two hundred and fifty feet waiver, to give you seventeen feet maybe?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Occasionally where the ground sort of tucks in funny way and it's gonna be enough, do you think?
Probably if you run it, depends where you measure it from, right? If you measure it from below the, the panel, it's gonna be taller, you know, above it, it'll be lower. Center line, I think, is where the sixteen and a half feet comes into play with the grade, you know, if the grade is.
I just, I, I, I wanna avoid any risk of future, you know, hazard here.
Is it, is it the sixteen and a half feet from finished grade?
Yeah.
So if we said seventeen, you're still, you're, you're hearing that.
Yeah, I mean, I, I wanna say yes, but can we just follow up with the panel technician and just see if they've run into that question before? Okay. Is that right?
Yeah, it's, it's more of a civil question than, uh, because, you know, how, how it's going to.
Yeah, I under, I understand, but, uh, yeah, let me just check into it.
Okay, yeah, we'll check.
The ground is high on one post, and the ground is low on a hundred posts.
Right, so I get to. Right.
Um, let's talk about runoff capacity, so grain we had, you know, it's twenty-four hours, but it was a lot. Can your system handle that?
Yeah, we designed it using HydroCAD, which is a program that essentially takes the existing conditions using historical rainfall data. Um, and we ran it for five, ten, twenty-five, fifty, and a hundred-year storms. Uh, so it's designed for a hundred-year storm.
Oh, that's great.
Which I think is a rainfall of seven inches per hour.
Yeah.
So, at the hundred-year storm, what's gonna happen is the eastern part of the collector field is gonna rain to the retention pond?
Yeah, it all overflows to the retention pond, which has.
You say overflow, where is it overflow?
Uh, so if it was in this channel, it would overflow the berm and run down this, uh, this swell.
Then across with the collector?
Culver into the retention pond. And then in the retention pond, there's a multi-stage, um, outlet structure, so it has a trickle filter in, but if it over, if it overtops that, it goes directly into the multi-stage outlet, and then the entire retention pond has a, uh, overflow.
Emergency spillway?
Yeah, emergency spillway.
To where?
With.
Which would go over the south side where this, uh, this here is a stone apron. And down to the brook.
To the brook, yeah. And it's designed just vegetation and wetlands, but the, the detention basin, correct me if I'm wrong, but there's nothing overtopping the emergency spillway in the hundred-year storm, so it's a hundred percent.
Right.
So a storm above the hundred-year storm would go over the emergency.
With much more capacity than.
And a hundred-year storm, that, that pond will be a lake.
Yeah, well, small lake. But it's all gravel.
Help too.
Gravel helps too, right? So like, there's a ton of infiltration going on on the site, and re-vegetating, it's gonna help immensely too.
And it's an improvement over the existing site, because right there, it just washes across the gravel and all the garbage and down the slope into the wetlands. This at least retains it and gives it some filtration. Herman, I, I spoke earlier about wanting a site visit, I'm not sure now, or who feel the need for that. This seems like quite a different project than the ones we did.
It is, it's.
First one, the other we had, it was, uh, on top of a landfill, and there was drainage issues into the neighboring houses' slots. And then the second one we did was a very steep slope above some residential properties, and there was erosion problems there. But you guys are in a completely different situation way up on the hillside, so my concerns are much reduced.
All the, the neighbors are all actually higher than, than their elevation, so.
Set when you hit torch.
Comes back up to the road?
Yeah, that's higher. Yeah, that's higher. See, see the, the.
Oh, yeah, because.
By the road, the brook's in the middle, so the brook actually would act as a runoff.
So much as I'd like to go on a hike, I don't.
Uh, on the decommission plan, is there a bond or anything in place for decommission?
So, um, that was not clear, yeah, to us in the, uh, wanting, I've forgotten exactly.
I just said it could be required, or maybe that was the old language.
Yeah, so that was a question that I had for the board.
The problem with, that we, from my understanding with bonds is they have to be renewed every year. And, um, uh, a lot of times if they fall through the cracks and they aren't really binding, so.
Well, so.
On a twenty-year project, we, we go by that they have a plan, and that's about it.
And who's gonna pay for it?
I believe it would be their agreement.
Yeah. The initial company sells it four times, five times in its life. Uh, we get a whole new group of faces they're talking to when it decides, if it ever does, to decommission the site. I mean, I don't think it will, you know, I'm just hoping. I think it's a perfect location, everything looks good, uh, I think it's gonna be there a lot longer than I'll be here, let's put it that way. So, but if it does happen, who's gonna pay for it? We have a decommission plan, but the plan's expensive.
Talked about when we wrote this bylaw, we talked about requiring a bond, and it seemed, one, very expensive for the applicant, which is maybe worthwhile if it's reliable, but. Um, if we, you know, we get somebody to pay for a bond for ten years, and then in year eleven, they don't buy it, and nobody notices, and they skip town and leave the place, you know, derelict. We haven't really got anything, we've had, we've had ten years of a bond that have expired.
What if we put it into part of the acceptance rejection, acceptance anyhow? Uh, that if it's sold, the new owner had, that bond has to be passed on and kept active.
Well, you'd want that if you had a bond, yeah, but I, I.
I mean, I just can't see the town paying for this, uh, we're not gonna benefit, you know, the, very little, there's nothing taxed.
When I read their plan, I saw the same problem, David, it's, you know, all good intentions, and I'm sure that these guys are still around when, for some reason, the country no longer needs electricity. Uh, or it's all, you know, we figured out how to make it from something that's free. Uh, you know, that, it, it'll be great, but, but if, if they're not around, you either need a bond, just take the, take the bad luck that comes to town. How much worse is this than the refrigerators and the, and the stuff that's up there now? I mean, you haven't done anything about that.
Cleanup is gonna be cheap for refrigerators, 'cause it's weight metal, okay? Uh, we don't know what, I mean, most of these panels are plastic, and God knows what's gonna happen with plastic. I mean, it could end up phase two of river cleanup, phase three, I don't know. Uh, I don't know what happens down the road, and I don't have a, no, there's no way I can tell.
I know the, I've always been told the bond rule is very problematic, stay away from it.
Well, is there another suggestion? Other than?
An agreement in their plan, and, and then we can hold, I mean, all of it is, that's about all we ever have.
Well, I, I can go, I'm along with agreement, agreement's better than nothing.
Yeah.
I mean, if the commissioning plan is approved, it would be part of the special permit that's recorded with the deed.
Yep.
Umbrance on the deed, so I think the town would have some teeth to say, look, you have a plan that's.
Well, that's, that's the only thing I'm really asking for, 'cause I say, I hope it never.
Not an attorney, so.
Change the panels out perpetuity up there.
We could file suit under breach of contract, I suppose, but who are we gonna sue, you know? This company from California that.
Yeah.
Consider the company from Mexico that they sold it to the weekend after.
I mean, if someone went to try to sell the property, you've got the encumbrance on there for decommissioning, you know, an attorney buying it's gonna see that, some.
That's true.
So.
We should decide, you know, as a board.
My question is, can we overlook the fifteen-foot height?
Think we can, I mean, they need, they need the height to stand these panels up.
Yeah, yeah.
It's a question if it really falls within the height bylaw of this.
Amount is variable, it's temporary.
Like, uh, almost doesn't fall under the zoning bylaw, but it wasn't clear, you know, so.
Well, do we, I'm relatively new to the board, you know, four years or whatever, but, uh, do we have anything in bylaw for the?
Zoning? Fifteen feet.
Yeah, then we gotta do something.
In the, in the solar bylaw.
Net, I understand what you're trying to say.
Yeah.
Uh, could take some time to change the zoning.
But it's not asking for a waiver. Permanent there. Very well.
Okay.
So.
What I was reading in the site plan review is that waivers can be given for any of the requirements of the site plan or.
Yeah.
Yeah, so if you're missing something in your application, we can waive that.
Right.
Right.
Let's go forward. Dave is reading a different question, this is a, this is like a frontage requirement or a setback requirement, it's a height requirement.
Height, on the installation, but it's not, the permanent installation isn't above fifteen feet.
Right, it'd be sort of like somebody.
Putting a flagpole, exactly, that's kind of what I'm looking at.
You written on that? Eighteen, fifteen feet is what's there. But the temporary part might be.
Well, that's, that's where I'm thinking that it, that it wouldn't exceed at rest, it wouldn't exceed fifteen feet. Only temporary ti, only temporary times of the year, it would be over fifteen feet.
It would be whenever the sun is low, is when they.
Right, during the winter months.
Could be called, temp, it's a temporary site.
Temporary.
There's no guarantees it's gonna go on forever.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So it's not like putting a building up and have to.
No.
Have to adhere to the height restrictions.
Right.
'Cause the building's gonna be there long, long term, uh, where this is not.
Probably three months.
They prob, wait a minute, what's three months?
I, I'm, I'm just guessing, I bet you it would be over that height for three months up.
Oh, totally, every, three out of tw, every twelve.
Yeah.
Winter, imagine, that's when you lay the panels flat, right? In the summer, you pick them up.
December.
I don't know where, I don't remember where the fifteen came from, if we copied it from somebody else, but this seems like a really small thing to.
I think, I'm not, I don't have an issue with that.
I do.
I just think we wanna get everything taken care of.
Right.
We think that there's a hundred people out there waiting to appeal. Boring, but I, I don't think there's gonna be any appeal.
No.
I think we have maybe a little.
Our, our bylaw says installation. And that. I take that as, uh, where am I at? Twelve. Twelve, A, two.
Twelve point something, right?
Oh. Nine, twelve.
Nine, twelve. A, two, E.
No.
Two, E.
Twelve. Okay.
What do you think?
Wanna try for it tonight?
I'm, yeah, I'd be okay.
I do.
I would.
You okay?
Yeah.
Any further discussion, anyone? Um, uh, one person online is unknown, could you identify yourself, please? Everyone involved in the meeting needs to identify themselves, could, uh, Mr. Unknown, please identify? I think, I would like to.
Yes.
Okay, so maybe.
I would like to dismiss them if they refuse to identify who they are. Anyone have an issue with that? What do you think, Beth? They're here, yes.
I'd say let's ignore them, just leave them.
Okay, let them be, okay. Any further discussion, Kathy, how you doing with this? Any questions? Are we bored you to death? Right.
Okay, now we have to.
I think there, uh.
Peter, are you gonna make?
Want me to make a motion? Okay, so let's review.
Can we?
Yeah, we gotta do our new, this is our first.
Oh, okay.
New.
A lot of motions, this is.
Yes.
Yes.
Yep.
Right.
Yeah, and waiver of.
Yeah. Okay, so, uh, I'll begin with, um. Board find that the requirements for a major site plan review have been substantially complied with, and that the application is suitable for review.
Here, if you'd like.
Any further discussion? Roll call, Dave?
Hi.
Peter?
Hi.
Peg?
Hi.
Buck Donovan, aye.
That the, um, site plan be approved? Just pause here, do we want any conditions of the site plan approval? I don't think so, I mean, we, we got the waiver to face, but is there anything else about roadway or?
Any, any conditions would, would have better legal standing in this, in the special permit, yes.
So I just move for approval of the site plan that submitted, site plan dated.
Good. Sorry, that's the wrong one.
Four, eleven? Eleven by seventeen in here.
Uh, six, nine. Okay, I move approval of the site plan June ninth, twenty twenty-three.
I'll second. Hey, roll call vote, Peter? Peg?
Aye.
Dave?
Aye.
Buck Donovan, aye. Move on to the special permit, correct?
Right.
Before you start your motion, are there, do we wanna do a? Year review afterwards? To make sure everything has been met, and that's what we've done before.
The building inspector being as picked out there?
What do we do with the, the second one, the one also off Cape Street? The, we, we held hearings afterwards, but, 'cause we had a lot of complaints, but were we holding hearings on the complaints, or were they scheduled hearings?
Both.
Both, there's one time I came in and. They did get better. Except we were.
But they changed their roadway and everything.
Yes.
Yeah, 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 there were a lot of neighbor concerns there.
Mowing was a concern.
Yeah.
By people.
I, I don't care, I'll include it if you want, it's for sure.
I mean, it's no problem, you wouldn't have to have a review, but. Not a bad idea to have something.
I, I think the location and what the location is could, it could go either way, it's not. Gravel pits are pretty stable topography, so.
Really? Yeah.
Yeah, I have a little bit of experience there.
Well, it doesn't, whatever.
The, um, the bylaw lists the reasons we might impose conditions to ensure adequate parking, to ensure adequate interior circulation and minimal conflict between vehicles and pedestrians, that's not gonna be a problem. To ensure safe and adequate access to and from public rights away, to ensure adequate access, travel, and on-site movement for fire and police equipment, that's been answered. To ensure reasonably adequate underground electric, telephone cable, et cetera, uh, and to ensure compliance with the signed bylaw, I think all of these have been. By their, oh, God.
Wanna do our five findings?
It goes on for another six or seven.
You wanna do the five finding?
Uh, no, I think, I think one of the, I prefer one at a time, just so we got a chance to think about it.
All right. We can move into those.
All right. I move that we find the use and structure to be in compliance with all provisions and requirements of this chapter, chapter one ninety-nine of the Lee bylaws, and in harmony with its general intent and purpose, um, but that we also, uh, grant a waiver to the fifteen-foot height requirement and allows seventeen feet. Uh, for the temporary, fully vertical collectors.
Okay. Okay, uh, any further discussion on that finding? Going around the room, Peter?
Aye.
Peg?
Aye.
Dave?
Aye.
Buck Donovan, aye.
This is.
Yes, first, first motion, first, uh, finding passes.
I move that the, uh, board find that the structure and use is essential or desirable to the public convenience or welfare at the proposed location. And I think that's perhaps obvious, but having more solar, uh, in this state is a good thing, and, um, this is as unimpactful to neighbors as I can imagine any project ever being. So I think that this, this finding is well-supported by the facts.
And it is not, um, taking away any agricultural land also.
No, it is, no, currently, I'm assuming.
And getting rid of some junk refrigerators.
Second finding? Anybody second it?
I'll second.
Dave can second it? Okay, going around the room, Dave, uh, Peter?
Aye.
Peg?
Aye.
Dave?
Aye.
Buck Donovan, aye. Second finding is approved.
I move that the board find that the structure and use will not be detrimental to adjacent uses, or to the establish or future character of the neighborhood. Lee is, uh, very low impact to any of the existing structures, which are quite a ways away, and, uh, I guess largely invisible to them. And, uh, there's quite a distance between these solar collectors and any adjacent structure or active use.
Second thought, Peter.
Okay, roll call, Peter?
Yes.
Peg?
Aye.
Dave?
Aye.
Buck Donovan, aye. Third finding, that was the third one, right?
Yeah.
Passes.
I move that the board find that there will not be undue traffic congestion or undue impairment to pedestrian safety. So we don't have any, except for the construction and the occasional guy with the mower, I mean, it's not gonna have any, uh, traffic impact at all.
I'll second.
Dave seconds, uh, roll call, Peter?
Aye.
Peg?
Aye.
Dave?
Aye.
Buck Donovan, aye. Fourth mo, fourth finding is passed.
I move that the board find that the structure and use will not overload any public water drainage or sewer system, or any other municipal facility. To the extent that the proposed use or any existing use in the immediate area or in any other area of the town will be unduly subjected to hazards affecting public health, safety, or general welfare. I think this criterion is mainly looking at other types of projects. Uh, the only risk here, it seems to me, is the, uh, drainage from, uh, rainwater, and it seems like they've taken very good care of that. And I suppose there's some, you know, electrical risk in the installation, but I'm assuming that's really not our, our jurisdiction to worry about. It's, um, other, other agencies and, and jurisdictions, so that's my motion for under number five.
Second.
Hey, Peter?
Aye.
Peg?
Aye.
Dave?
Aye.
Buck Donovan, aye. The fifth finding is passed.
So I move that, um, the special permit be granted with the waiver of, um, fifteen-foot height requirement to seventeen feet for. fifteen-foot height requirement to seventeen feet for temporary height of the collectors.
Okay. Uh, okay, round the room. Peter?
Aye.
Peg?
Aye.
Dave?
Aye.
Buck Donovan, aye. Motion passes. Special permit is granted.
Thank you very much.
Best use of that piece of property.
Good thorough job, you guys.
Thank you.
Very, yes. Preparation is always helps so much.
I spent two hours reading it this afternoon. I felt like, except for the fact that I didn't understand the hillside stuff, but.
I don't think we can do that across the street, though, buddy. Sorry. I got other ideas over there. Oh, yeah, well. You know, the reason.
Thank you, guys.
For this notice?
They had a little reunion. Yeah, yeah.
That's good. Yeah, when you look at it.
Yep.
Yeah.
Right, you're there.
Wait. Oh, yeah, the twenty-day deal.
Now, you, you know, there is an appeal time and all that, so.
And you can't build.
I wouldn't build, no. If you're at your own risk, if there's an appeal in the next third, twenty days? Twenty days.
Will you mail the decision to Forside to that yet?
It goes to all the butters, all the towns, you guys. That would be fine if you sent it to Forside. Except to actually issue.
Well, like I say, there is a twenty-day appeal time, so, yeah.
All right. Thank you so much.
And you're, you're at your own risk there, but I, nobody was here. I don't really see anything.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Good luck.
Oh. Yep, oh.
I think it's gonna be better than.
Good deal. The hearing is now closed.
Okay. Yeah.
What do you do with that one? It's much steeper over there.
Six fifty-two.
There's not much you can.
No.
I mean, I look at that every time I go over by Hyland Farm.
You see that from Hyland?
Yeah.
Way out there?
Yeah.
Or you seeing the one?
No, it's the, you, you, I mean, I haul too many loads of gravel out of there. Tell me that I can't see.
I'll have to look at that one of the, or the.
Years ago, when you guys bought vehicle property.
Yeah.
There was a monster pile of dense grated. You guys ever do anything when I bought?
Used it.
Good. That's good.
This one here. This one here. This is off of Maple.
Mm-hmm.
This is the high road. And I think you see this one here. That's where we used to haul out of where all the power lines are.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, and that stack of dense grade was right down here. Most of that was gone by the time we got there.
Not good.
But then I cleaned it up.
This face there?
Yeah.
My uncle used to dig that with a unit.
The one that's down by the road now?
Yeah.
Probably.
And that thing, the bank used to come in. Spend days digging it out when the bank came in.
Yeah.
They used to do nothing but turn around and vote for the bank.
Okay, moving on our agenda. I lost my first piece of agenda.
Public comment?
Public comment. Kathy, you still with us?
Oh, yes, yes. You had asked me a question before, and I answered, but I was muted, so you didn't hear me. Yes, everything was fine with that presentation. It was very well done. I do have one question, though, because you had said right at the beginning, in order to vote, you needed all five people from the board. Was that for something else?
No, we, for this, for a special permit, we need, you need a super majority, so that, that meant we needed four yes votes.
Okay.
With only four people sitting here, that meant it needed to be unanimous.
Okay. Well, that's.
Nobody, yeah.
Yeah, so number one, my comments here, congratulations on keeping your seat here as the chairperson. And secondly, congratulations that there was a recording of this meeting, because the last time you couldn't record it. And then I don't know if it's appropriate, can I do a shout-out of an activity at the, for the Lee Youth Commission?
Sure. I have no issue with that. You keep on going.
Be surprised if you.
That's right. That's a given.
Anyways, um, the Lee Youth Commission is offering free summer kickball for interested children and families every Tuesday at the Lee Athletic Field, July eleventh through August first, three thirty P M until five P M. The event will be canceled if it rains, so that's already a given. And the gathering is geared toward children in grades one through six, but all ages and skills are welcome. And this is not a drop-off activity. That means parents or somebody needs to be with the younger children during the event. Because we need to focus on the children having a good time playing kickball and not being focused in on anybody running around the field. And that's it for now. Thank you so much.
Thank you. That's, thank you, Kathy. Okay. Moving on. Have our accessory dwelling. Zoning bylaw amendments. Peter, do we really? I know you did an, you, you want to report on that?
I'd like to tell you about, there's really two rounds of changes that I'd like to talk to you about. Some of them are pretty minor, but there are some important questions to decide, I think. So we sort of put this thing into limbo or into hibernation, waiting for the upcoming expected fall town meeting. But unexpectedly, we got comments from Jamie Wickham and from Matt Comer and Don Fitzgerald. So there were some technical issues that I had overlooked, or at least one. Jamie, Jamie's draft had raised a lot of issues, but I think most of them, the existing draft took care of. Like, for instance, he said, well, we need to say that only one family's houses can have ADUs. And we already said that, but in a different place. So I think it was taken care of, and I wrote back to him, but I haven't heard that he disagrees. So the few things that I agreed with, I don't mean to be disparaging of it at all. It was very thoughtful, but the few of the things I did agree with, and one of them I thought was really an important issue, and that is that we had decided that we wanted to address only detached ADUs because we believed that an attached ADU is the same thing as a two-family duplex. And what they pointed out, and which I had never really thought about, a really important fact is that the minimum lot size for a two-family is generally twice the lot size required for a one-family. So if you've got a one-family on a smallish lot that's close to the minimum size and turn it into a two-family, because you don't have enough lot. So what do we want to do about that, if anything? Do we want to make it easier for that person to put in an attached ADU and not trigger the double lot size requirement? And I, I never got them to say clearly, but I sensed that Don Fitzgerald thought we should do that from his email. It seemed to me that he was saying this is an important thing for people who are already living in one-family houses.
Example, a lot size for, unless, just asking if we have an example somewhere of a lot size, but what I'm thinking of is.
I can wait.
No, just where it has a duplex on it. Because there's one, the only one that's off the top of my head that's relatively new is. Yep, duplex. Because most of them duplexes now are old buildings, but right preexist. Is up on East Center Street.
That's the one I'm thinking of, too.
And it used to be, uh, that he was a cop. Here he is, and he sold it. But that, that lot does not look any bigger. It looks very small.
So I can't, I can't comment knowledgeably about how a place with a small lot got a duplex approved.
Yeah, me either. I mean, but it came as a duplex.
Might not be in compliance.
Uh, and the other ones are on the corner of Tamarack and East Center, the, the Garrity built years ago.
duplex?
Yep.
And East Center?
Nope, or East Street, I'm sorry.
East Street.
No, it's East Center. Before, before you come to Tamarack Road. There's two. Petalou lived in one.
That's right, yes.
On the north side?
Uh.
East Center?
Uh, south side.
South side.
So maybe duplexes were built that didn't meet the zoning requirements, but.
Okay. Well, I mean, I'm not questioning the, the building inspector, that's for sure.
How much?
But if you look in the bylaw, I mean, in the table, I'll give you an example.
Forty thousand.
Yeah, it's twenty thou, in the R twenty zone for one family. It's forty thousand for a family. So I thought that was an oversight on my part that presented a question. Do we want to just have the narrow proposal that addressed only detached ADUs? Or do we want to address the broader issue that would allow somebody who wants to either build an addition on their house for a relative? Somebody who wants to convert an upstairs with an outside stairway into an apartment? But doesn't, but can't, can't meet the lot requirement for a two-family. We want to help those people. And I thought, my, my own sense was, yes, I agreed with Don Fitzgerald and what he seemed to be saying, so. But I think it's a fair question for the board to discuss.
What's a square footage of an acre?
So I'll, I'll look it up.
Well, I, I, I agree with that statement.
Forty-three, five, sixty.
If it's going to hold people back from doing this, if they can't meet the lottery requirements. But I'm just afraid that they're gonna, you gotta somehow call it out and not become a duplex.
Well, what's the difference? I mean, isn't it a duplex if I devote the upstairs and put an outside stairway in and rent off the upstairs with a bathroom in it?
Well, I always thought we were doing this for an elder homeowner that wanted to keep their property, and if they're probably, if they made a smaller an ADU, if it was smaller, they'd move into that and rent the big one.
Well, maybe, yeah, yeah. But they can't do either if it's, if they need a bigger lot.
That's right.
Yeah.
Yep.
I agree with you. Intent was that we were trying to help people to be able
Stay in their homes.
To stay in their home and.
In their neighborhood.
You know, a lot of people. People, yeah. I don't know how they live. I mean, on the amount of money that, you know, people tell me, well, this is what I get a month, and I'm thinking, wow. I mean, well, my intent is, I agree with you guys. I'd like to try to help people stay in their homes and.
When I was first married, I rented a place over in Schenectady with my wife. It was an old farmhouse, and it was, they raised three kids in this tiny little farmhouse, and then when the kids moved out, they split it and gave two-thirds to the tenant, which was me, and kept one-third to themselves. And they sold a couple in their eighties, had a tiny little dining room, a tiny little kitchen, a tiny little bathroom, a tiny little bedroom, and a porch. And that was, they had, probably had four hundred square feet.
Yep.
And the rest of the six hundred square feet, they rented to us. And that's how they made, that's how they kept things together.
Yeah. Well.
But they had, he had eighty acres, so.
He had plenty of room.
Oh, okay, it sounds like we're more, at least generally, in favor of making this broadening of the concept to include.
Would open up a few things, some better options, for sure. Just see, I, I don't think piccolos is legal. In our require, in our, in our.
I'm not saying another word, if you know what I mean.
I don't think it already said.
Spent there for a long time. I don't know, who knows?
It was hot.
So another, if you're ready to go on, another thing that the enforcement people suggested was a statement that each ADU must function as a fully separate unit. And that means a bathroom, kitchen, egress. And that, no, I added that to the, to the draft since our last meeting. I thought that was a good suggestion. And I'll tell you more about my meeting with Gordon Bailey today, but he has a few wording changes to that that I'll tell you about. And the next thing is parking. I think it was Don again who wrote that. He thought we, our parking requirement was too rigid, and what we had was.
Mentioned that, too.
It was Jamie, yeah, that what we had was four parking spaces for the lot, but just for the house and the ADU. And I don't think he got that. I thought he, he seemed to be talking about understanding that we were requiring four parking spaces for the ADU. I'm not sure what he thought, but anyway. It led me to wonder whether we ought to relax a little bit on this. And so this draft, and I asked Beth to send you, says three instead of four. So I put three in just because I wanted to raise the issue with you about whether you really want to stick with four. You know, it, as I think Gordon was saying this afternoon, mom and dad live in the house, and they daughter moves into the ADU, daughter's gonna have a car, and so is her boyfriend, so it's gonna. But, but should we require four street parking or three? I don't, I don't feel strongly either way, but I just, I'm presenting the issue to you because it came up in emails.
I don't think it's a, I mean, we're still at three, we're still over. I think we usually figure one and a half per.
That's true.
So we're at, we're at a three.
Two units, two units, and one and a half is three. Yeah, okay, okay.
And believe me, we, we have six.
I know.
And four kids. There's six cars, is it right, Beth? You've seen it. Awful.
And then I got a new paragraph eight, which addresses an issue which we haven't discussed previously, I think, which is once an ADU is built, if it's detached, then they split the lot.
Thought we did deal with that right away, that it could not be severed.
Okay, I just couldn't find.
I think you're right. I don't, and if it isn't, we don't want to be.
So, so paragraph eight on the draft that you have on page two should be. It says a lot on which a detached ADU has been constructed cannot be divided or conveyed in a way that develops ownership of the property dwelling in the ADU. Now, I am not completely sure that we get to say this because there's all sorts of subdivision rules that the state imposes, and I, I think we should try.
Oh, totally, and.
There shouldn't be a way to get smaller lots, to evade the minimum lot size. There should be a way to get something different than what zoning first talked about. Go ahead, Buck, I'm sorry.
Well, you yeah, you could do it. But if you were gonna do that, you would form a it in the beginning anyway, I think.
Yeah. That form A is what I worry about.
Yeah. I, I mean, they, because they couldn't, they couldn't cut it in half and make two non-conforming lots. You can't do that.
You could do form A.
The form A.
Okay.
You can't create a non-conforming lot. But throwing that in there is not a, I, I, I like it. It's added security.
And then I think oh, I added, in the, in the definitions, I added that it may be attached or detached, which is, of course, what we started talking about. So that was phase one of my comments, and I produced a draft based on what I thought you might like. And then I met with Gordon today for an hour or so about this, and he had some other ideas. Really, you know, he's, he's an experienced administrator of zoning and building codes. And so in several cases, I had used terms that were, could be more, made more precise. I, I think I said in the structure or something, and he said, you should say dwelling unit, because dwelling unit is a thing that. Because dwelling unit is a thing that everybody deals with all the time.
Okay.
Uh, and I'd said a bath and he said, you should say a bathroom, which is what I meant, but bathroom is clearer. You know, that, that sort of thing. So what I'm going to suggest, um, is that I just do Gordon's cleanups and send it around again.
Did he have anything else? I'm curious. Cause I, cause I, I, that's, and I'll admit that is a lot of my problem because I read these and I'm glad that you guys are here because I read them and I understand what we're trying to say in my head.
Yeah.
But I know it's not always written like that.
So he, and to a much less, lesser extent, I have had experiences where seemingly clear legislative language turns out not to mean what you thought it did, you know? And lawyers make a living finding ways to construe things to favor their clients. So I, I, I took this as a very useful meeting. And, you know, if, if somebody else can think of ten other things that we could make clearer, I'll be glad to meet with them too. Oh, there is one final, one substantive thing at the end. We have a definition of short-term rental here at the very end. And we have a short-term rental proposal, which has a different definition of short-term rental, which matches the state tax law of short-term rent. And so what do you do? Which one do you pick? So what we, uh, tentatively decided between Gordon and me is, first thing, when we, when we get to town meeting, the first thing to come up should be the short-term rental by law. And if it passes, then we have an option here that says, short-term rental is defined over there in that bylaw. And if it doesn't pass, which is what I was worried about, then we would revert to this language.
Well, what, do you have the language?
Well, oh, well, so I think when I redraft this, it's going to say, you know, optional.
Why don't we use the both in same? Well, you don't, we, same definition.
Well, the problem with the definition in state law is it's about two pages long. It's got, I mean.
Yeah, I have, I do, yes, I do recall that now.
Doesn't apply to this and it doesn't apply to that, you know?
Can we, can we do the, as defined?
Um. Yeah, we can just define it as in state law, I guess. Let me, let me look at the other one. So we got a short-term rental that's one, two, four, six, eight, nine lines long.
And in our short-term.
Got exempted accommodations that are not short-term rentals. So there's, and there's ten of those. I could try for incorporation by reference of state law is what you're saying, right?
Well, I just. I'm confident. But yeah, let's do, let's do refer to short-term rental by law.
Okay. I just, I, I feel better as recommending this to the town. That the town has something in front of them that they can read and understand and not have to go out and, you know, go to the law.
I agree. I don't think, and then on the, I'm just thinking on the floor, to amend a definition would, should not be a problem.
Well, right. But what I'm proposing is that we give two options for that last definition. The short one, which says, use the other bylaw, as defined in other bylaw. Or, but if that one doesn't pass for some reason, then we have a definition that we can fall back.
This one right here. Okay, perfect. Yeah.
Now, in the ADU, Peter, are we still, are we still not allowing short-term rentals?
Correct. That's still in there. That's still in there.
Okay. Just to make sure.
Yep.
You have to refresh my memory. That's fine.
Won't you?
No, that's.
Did you?
That's why we had to define it. Because that's where it's used. That's the only place it's used in the ADU by law.
Thank you.
Okay, and then, uh, if I can.
Egg, seven.
I have it. I mean, I have on the, yeah. Just want to make sure.
On the STR, uh, I also went over that with Gordon and I know we have a different process.
Are you going to talk about that?
No, I'm just going to say, I'll talk, I would like to put it on.
I'm running for the hills.
I think you can, I think you can sit here while I say, I'd like to add it on the agenda for next time. I have a draft too.
Okay, thank you.
That's it.
That's it? Very good.
Awesome. Awesome.
You have a, uh, master plan report on the agenda and I.
We did not, but we can, I believe we can, any topic.
So, um, we are expecting to have a meeting next week. Uh, we've had a meeting a month ago, three weeks ago, uh, where we began for the first time to consider text. And we, we got about thirty pages of background information, tables on population, housing, transportation. Uh, you know, how old are we? How, we're getting older. Sad to say, but I want to tell you something. I want to tell you something. This is, so our, our average immediate age went up three or four years or something like that. Not very, a lot, you know?
Yeah.
Didn't significant, but. I was watching a, uh, YouTube the other night from Stockbridge. They have a great committee over there doing housing work. Very clear presentation they were reviewing on this YouTube video. And Stockbridge has, I think the number is sixty percent of their people in Stockbridge are over sixty. We're like at twenty-nine or something like that.
Negative. Yeah.
It's, we're quite different from the.
Oh, I know that.
Well, I mean.
No, but I mean.
Not just an attitude. Yeah.
I believe if you looked at.
Anyway, I'm sorry for the degradation.
That's good. So we're getting older.
So we're getting older and, um, we have, you know, I, I don't feel like we really got our arms fully around the housing issue yet. I feel like we need to know more about what the median rent is. They, they had some great stuff in Stockbridge. They had, um, they had numbers about what your income has to be.
Oh, I know.
Get a mortgage on a house that sells for the median price in this town. Now, our median price is around four hundred, right? It went up over four hundred for a year or two.
Yeah.
Now it's drifted back down. Their median price, you know, for one year, from pre-COVID, like three hundred and fifty thousand, up to over seven hundred. And then back down to five seventy-five. So they, they are clearly in a different kind of market. We, we're a little bit in that market, but they're dominated by the city market, I think, in a way that we only feel sort of tremors of, you know? They got a big ton. But, but the number that they showed were, if you want to buy a house at the median price, what's your income got to be?
Yeah.
If it's a one-family house. And it was, you know, it was a shockingly large number for them. So we want to, I want to get us to produce that kind of number, you know? And, and also to help on the ADU thing. They, they had two numbers, two calculations. One was one family and the other one was two family. And the number for one family, the income you need was like a hundred and forty-eight thousand. I'm remembering this right? I don't know.
No, you probably are. It's just.
And the number for a two-family was like sixty-two thousand. Okay? So if we get the ADU, ADU thing through, that's going to make a big difference of housing affordability. Because there's going to be two, two families, you know, sharing the costs of that lot. So anyway, that was encouraging thing. Anyway, so we're going to meet again. We're going to work on some more texts. I haven't gotten a second draft from the staff person, but I expect to get that soon and circulated to the committee. I've been saying that we will try to finish, uh, by Christmas. Uh, I'm hoping that we can do that, but, uh, we aren't, we aren't really yet on that path. I think we're going to have to either accelerate things in September or maybe extend it a little bit. I do want to have one more public hearing of that with this master plan committee before we submit the master plan draft to you all. So that we, the town can see what we're recommending for goals and objectives. And get an initial feedback on, you know, if, oh, people tell us we've gone nuts or, you know, it looks good or whatever they want to tell us. And I think that'll help you guys, just to attend and listen to, you know, what their reaction is to our work before you have to put your own selves on the line for it. Uh, so the other thing though is, um, I have a vacancy and, um, I have tried to recruit two people. I have not reached one of them, but I did reach the other one and I strongly endorse her being appointed to the committee. And I ask for, I would make a motion that you appoint Marilyn Wyatt to the committee. Marilyn has agreed to serve and I think she's very highly qualified and a thoughtful person, knows a lot of great ideas about the future of me. So I recommend her highly.
She the one?
Yes.
She lives, she lives on Maple Street, up behind the, uh, Friendly Coffee Place.
Yeah.
And, um, she's just, just uphill from the Brook.
She only came in about the lights?
I think she is.
She, she, she is cranked about the lights. Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's what I was.
No, she, it's nothing to do with it. I just put a name with a face, isn't it?
Exactly.
She's given thought to how zoning is enforced or not enforced in the, and she has some opinions about that, which you may or may not eventually hear. Uh, but, uh, anyway, she's a retired, I'm not sure retired, but a former US Foreign Service Officer. She's got personal great experience. She's moved all over the world. Lot to our process. So I make that motion.
And we'll vote to appoint her. Uh, Peter? Egg?
Aye.
Dave?
Aye.
Hooked on of an aye. She is so appointed.
Thank you. That's it.
Hey, very good. Thing else, uh, I was just clicking through, we, at some point, we have to make a formal, it carries on, but we have to do the, a formal delegate for Berkshire Regional. We'll have that on the next planning board. Agenda. I think we need to run the agenda, so.
You willing to do that?
Oh, yeah.
Officer.
Treasurer right now, so.
Good.
Well, um, we'll put that. Or it would be right, but in the current atmosphere.
Nah, do it.
You can still function while the.
That's what, what it says, the law, and the, the alternate has to be appointed by select board, so.
Oh.
I don't know. So bizarre.
Historical exhibit is up at the library if anybody wants to see it. To say though, I enjoyed the concert, the cultural council, what they're doing and park, um. I didn't even think of what it is. The farmer's market. Those are nice things, I think, that bring people.
Saturdays look so good.
I wish we could do about three more days of them during the week.
During the week.
Farmer's market?
No, something to attract the downtown.
Yeah.
Oh.
It's, uh, with the Eagle Mill, which I see we're getting ready to tear those houses down. They're in there every day. They're out in the ring today working.
Yeah, that's wonderful. I mean.
So it is moving, um, but we need, if we, once we get building and occupying, we need something to keep these people in town.
Yeah.
We're growing, um, and we're growing as a community, I think, because it's interesting thing. You talk about the outdoor concerts last Wednesday. My better half and I, we went down to Great Barrington to the gazebo behind Town Hall. Listened to a concert there, then went over to Railroad Street for something to eat. And I'm like, and I've, you, you guys have heard my frustration. It's like, God, why can't we, look at this on a Wednesday night? I mean, it was bustling, it was going. And she says, and she had a business down there back in the nineties.
Oh.
And she says, it wasn't like this in the nineties. And I remember growing up there. She's right. It, they rolled up the sidewalks at, at seven o'clock like we do. And, and it's, but it's grown. They've, you know, it, it got better and better and, you know, we're still recovering. We don't hear it anymore, thank God, about the mills. But that was, you know, just now, people, people have stopped complaining about the mills. Now we're, we're into, okay, let's grow our community into.
Well, we have the next board question is right across the street here. They switched from the mills to the Price Chopper property.
Price Chopper.
Well, it is.
Complaining about that?
Of cour-, well, why not? I mean, what I saw in the downtown.
It is.
Well, let's, let's look at.
I mean, I don't know.
I mean, that brings our next thing. Do we, do we want to get off the ground, maybe?
Do they own that now? Who owns that? Does Price Chopper?
They still have an option. The, the original developers from Barrington, I believe, isn't it?
They have an option and nobody will touch it because of the pending lawsuit.
Well, I can't say it's up there.
Does Avians have more parking signs out than they used to?
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah.
Well.
I think they hired a hitman to, to man the parking lot too.
Wow.
I wonder, do we want to look into? No, it's, they.
They've been parking, well, I'm not.
No, but they were notified. No, don't even, don't even put that on tape because they were notified year after year after year that that was not their property. So any adverse possession po- possibility went out the window as soon as you're notified.
Why are they going to trial?
Because they think they do have a case.
I mean, we had the opportunity to use the other gazebo that's on, uh, off a railroad street. Uh, plenty of parking all the way around it.
That's true.
Uh, yet nobody seems, that thing sits idle.
It does.
I mean, it's a shame because it's, other than having the highway garage in the Ralbee building that doesn't look too sharp, but, uh, uh, the rest of that, that area, it's.
You think people are going to want to come down there and be near the post office?
Well, you know, you get, no.
It's not as bad as Ralbee.
Well, we need somebody that can come in and plan events like that to base it around what we have.
Well, the Cultural Council gives grants. They were the ones who did those, those Sunday concerts.
The gazebo, there's not enough green space down there.
Take all the parking lots around. You realize that we spent, you know, a half a million dollars to knock down a building to park six cars, so.
And a sweeper.
Well, that's for sale, so.
It's, yeah, go in auction.
Where was this? The one right up here?
Now, the, the old. The old, uh, bullseye. But, I mean, do, you talk about the Price Chopper property, do we want to start looking into being an economic development agency within the town like we used to have?
Well, it's part of our portfolio to try and make good things happen in the town with the land use, I think, so. I don't know how much advocacy we can get into. If we have to sit on an application later, we can't be an advocate and a judge, but.
That's true.
We can say what kind of thing we're looking for. I wondered, you know, maybe we ought to talk about this here too. At the end of the last meeting, I brought up some potentially controversial ideas about transportation. The members of my committee, every one of them I suggested said, oh, we tried that thirty-five years ago. Oh, we tried that twenty-five years ago. We tried that fifteen years ago. But, um, I think that, uh, there are a lot of people who complain about the fact that Route Twenty with all the trucks big cement things going by, runs right down to Main Street two ways. And, um, and then at the bottom of the main street, if you're going south or eastbound, I guess, on Route Twenty, make a left turn with the right, with the right-of-way, confusing the heck out of everybody who's not from here. So should we be trying to get some of that Price Chopper property to be a right-of-way for a northbound, southbound split on Route Twenty through town? Should we have the, you know, only one-direction truck traffic on Main Street and have Railroad Street, you know, be the southbound?
Well, that was talked about years ago.
I know it. That's what they told me.
Well, it was. Or look bigger. Uh, look countywide and, and how to, how to relieve our main street with other roads in the county.
Yeah.
Well, do you remember there was an exit on, on West Road for the tug bike?
Yeah.
And they would run Route Seven from there into West Road. And everybody said, not in my backyard. You're not putting it up here. So it's, you, you, no matter what you do.
And then another idea is what about the diagonal parking? I understand you're an expert at this. I'm just a beginner, but I understand that the highway people hate diagonal parking.
They do.
And, but what if we, if we got rid of them, what would we do with that space? Would we have parallel parking and some sort of a four-foot bank or, you know?
Well, that's what we got to talk about. What to do on the, uh, east side of Main Street.
And what about the bottom where the car was? Would there be a roundabout there? Is that?
I've heard talks about tearing down our hardware building.
Is there enough land to put a roundabout in?
Uh, I think so, but boy, you know, we, we got two bone to cont. Oh, I think so, but boy, you know, we, we got two bonus contentions down there. We got the funeral home, which is a historic building, and we have the park.
Which is preserved.
So, but if you took down, if that building was gone and you put the roundabout, most of it, use the existing part of road right now as it sits and push it into that parking lot. People said, well, it's too small. I said, you know what? These roundabouts are made for everybody to drive over. I mean, you come in there with a tractor trailer, you don't have to stand.
Inner raised, slightly raised surface for the tractor trailer.
They can run right across the middle of it.
Yeah, look at the one on Dalton Ave. Or, and actually, I was talking to Beth about it, the one at Great Barrington that everybody down on the end of Maple Street, everybody are, had a heart attack about it. I mean, both, we were both down there the same day. I said, did she, I said, last Saturday, and she says, oh, yeah, went right through. I was like, yeah, me too.
People hate roundabouts for the first year and then they love them.
Right, that's right. And I guess you could need to get down and talk to people on Route 5. I mean, every, every exit down there has a roundabout. Everyone.
There's, you got to look at the one coming off the north way up in Malta area. They, they actually have three.
I was there just.
Three roundabouts right in a row. And it, it does, everything keeps flowing. And, and Manchester, New Hampshire, they have, or Manchester, Vermont, they have two going into town. We needed a lot of that traffic issue.
Well, you know, you talked about the concrete trucks coming through Downstreet, downtown. Is there another concrete company Connecticut area that makes some more product?
You mean cement trucks or the pre-cast?
Pre-cast.
Yeah, but they've been, I've been noticing lately, there's been like three or four that run together and they're coming up 102.
I don't know.
So I didn't know if there was another pre-cast company.
I just mentioned it because I think it's probably the hardest thing for a roundabout to handle is a big long truck like that.
Well, to me, what, I mean, we, we've reached out to them, but until we do something with that diagonal parking, the state's not going to help us. They told us. We, we can, you know, we, we'll contribute funds, we'll contribute engineering, but you got to do away with it. Because the street isn't big enough.
Well, Buck, let's work on that this year. Let's, let's get serious about, I mean, the master plan committee is going to come, probably going to come in and say, the planning board ought to look at this stuff. There's no reason you can't start.
Berkshire Regional has a transportation subcommittee.
But do we have to start off with DOT?
You guys work, or we work on the main street and we, we work on countywide traffic. The exits off the turnpike would help us a lot.
Oh, immensely.
If we could get a northbound only, say it on Route 7 in Stockbridge, would be incredible. Everything, you know, and it wouldn't be, it would be lower.
Seriously and honestly, do you think that would?
Well, it would take years probably. You'd have to get local legislators to lobby for the money.
The worst part is.
But we got to start.
It's getting north, people, the trucks that go northbound. Because you go through a large residential area, a system on West Road.
No, it wouldn't be West, West Road anymore. You could, you could do it up right here. Be right on Route 7, because the turnpike will not dump a road onto, that's not a state highway. So you'd have to dump onto, and now with their tolling, how their tolling is, they wouldn't have to do a giant cloverleaf with an exit.
Oh, that's right. There's no, there's no toll. So you didn't have to worry about putting up a toll plaza.
Slow down and turn right, you know.
And it'd be the same way where you could only get eastbound coming.
I, I got a suggestion. If we reach out to Smitty Pig and tell him.
Do that.
I mean, I, you can do it. I can do it. I know Smitty very well. Just feel him out to see what, you know, if he could come up with, is financing going to be available to the state to help us with our traffic problem on Main Street? And it's going to cost, I mean, somebody's going to spend a lot of money to, to foot off ramps.
Oh, yeah.
Cloverleaf.
Well, it wouldn't, you wouldn't, you would, like, like he said, it'd be similar to what West Stockbridge has. Just a ramp each way. But there's also.
Can you hit this Route 7 off of turnpike without cloverleaf and making it swing?
I think it'd be possible.
There's all kinds of free. Unramp and off-ramp in both directions. There's no cloverleaf involved.
See, there was always the problem. You can't do, you couldn't do a toll plaza because of these two houses here. You don't need it. You could do an on-ramp there, off-ramp here, and that's it. But when you would need, need the big cloverleaf would be if, if you came down here to go southbound.
I don't know what the merchants.
For traffic commission? We did do standard traffic commission.
Well, traffic commission, again, people lost interest.
They did.
It ended in Board of Public Works lab.
Yeah, it did.
Just a whole nother story.
I mean, then, I mean, we could look into also hiring a traffic study to, to give us a, a, a full, you know, feasibility of what could happen. You know, do we, do we push for a, an exit off the turnpike? Do we, the alternate routes are, are what?
Do, do you think the idea of dividing the north and southbound traffic in town is implausible?
I do.
I do. Just because of the real estate you're taking.
Well, you take part of the Price Chopper lot.
Yeah, okay. Then you got to, you follow on the river, so you got to go to the post office and got to go.
And you're not.
But you got to, you can't cross the river till you get to.
Speed back up to the bridge by luck.
So everything that's close to the river, got to go.
And you're, we're still not changing the numbers that come through town.
No, but, yeah, that's true.
And then we, I don't remember how we brought them out. I actually think that we came down to, through Price Chopper parking lot and dumped them onto Park Street and then they took a left.
That's what I was thinking, yeah. That, that's been tried and rejected.
I'm not saying it can't work. Everybody said that when the Town of Lennox, when they put the bypass in, it was going to kill the Town of Lennox. Oh, yeah, it killed them with kindness.
Really worked out ideally for them. Traffic one way, interesting little village the other way.
Same thing going on to the Cape when they did that. I don't think of, I mean, we're, we're not feasible for a bypass though.
No.
Because of the mountains?
Mountains and the.
Because they talked, another route was to bring Route 20 over East Street.
Yeah.
And use East Street. Well, here you are now, you're in a very populated area. So of course.
That's right. Go up, go up over the hill. I still.
I don't know. I wish you luck, Peter.
Anyway, I just, I'm just forecasting to you. I've got the same reaction from you three, more or less that I got from the eight.
Let's, let's do, do the loop, you know, dispersa. Again? Oh, I'm sorry. Hey, Gordon.
Hello, just, just seeing what I could see at the end. I just got home.
Yeah, we're, we're, we're just discuss, discussing traffic in town. We're, we're past most of our agenda items.
Great. Nope, that's good. I didn't think I'd make it at all. I'm just glad that you guys got through it.
We did.
That's super.
Yeah, Peter's going to give us another draft on the ADUs after your discussion today and it's looking good.
Super. That sounds great. Yeah, I, I appreciate his patience with me while we've gone over this stuff.
Okay, in fact, we're getting about ready to adjourn. So you have any, any discussion tonight?
Nope, I just happened to be in. I figured, well, were you guys still talking about things? I didn't know what was happening, so I thought I'd check it out.
Okay, all right. We're, I think we're about done.
Move to adjourn.
So moved. Meetings adjourned. Goodbye. Thank you all.
Thank you.